Hey. When you get a chance, stop over and I got something for you. Mick was cleaning out the closet. She was on vacation last week and she found an Iowa State flag and I can't think of anybody else who would want it.
I could put it together.
Okay.
Today is Monday. It is March 19th, 2012, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting and posted in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act made accessible for all members of the public. If you would, I would ask that you would stand and join with us in a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Bows?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Okay. And first off, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second? A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, if you will please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Okay, and next would the approval of the full agenda, as presented you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
A motion with a second to approve the full agenda, again, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Okay, under special presentations then tonight, first we have a proclamation for the month of April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 11th, 2012 marks the 44th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, is amended, which enunciates the national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunity for all citizens. And whereas the Norfolk Housing Agency and the Norfolk Housing Development Division of the City of Norfolk are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to add to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now therefore be it resolved that I sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Fair Housing Month. Seeing no one here, we'll just record this and move on to the recreation update then.
Continuing to make progress. During the last couple of weeks, we were able to start some of the concrete plaza work between the baseball stadium and the football soccer stadium. In fact, we had hard surfaced all the way into the baseball stadium for the first game there on Saturday afternoon. Couple hockey ga-- or hockey games, soccer games there Saturday afternoon as well. Contractors continuing to make work there. We started some of the work down on the entrance right in front of the armory. Niemhaas working for the armory and also working for the city and some of that stuff. They're working great because they're able to coordinate those two projects together, but they tore out the concrete in front of the armory and we're working on that. Over on the pool, we started to put up some of the superstructure for the slides here in the last, late last week. That work will continue here through the first part of April. One of the play feature slides showed up this week. They're probably about two-thirds of the way done with the masonry and the multipurpose building. Got the skylights on this week, so should have a watertight building now. Still working on some doors and windows yet, but continue to make progress there. So with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at all, council?
I have a, just not so much a question, but maybe you could just inform us a little bit, as far as the ball fields go, the seating behind the ball field, you can explain what the occupancy is there and the additional seating around there, so that I think, just some of the questions I've received, just because it looks smaller than what was originally there, and just so to let everybody know how that's intended to be used.
The bleachers for the baseball have a design capacity of 300, I believe. Then on either side of the bleachers, there's a concrete area that can be used for seating as well, folding chairs, lawn chairs, maybe a picnic table or two. It's just a concrete area. It's raised up as high as the lower level of the bleachers. It's probably about two and a half, three feet above the warning track behind home plate. It's not quite as high as the top of the dugouts, but kind of up there, and that area can be used for additional seating and depending on the occasions, you know, maybe fairly informal to, you may add some more formality to it if you've got some bigger tournaments or something coming, so.
Anything else? Anybody may have questions or... I'll tell you one thing, Dennis, I don't know that you're going to get me to go up on top of one of those slides. Those look pretty darn high.
Well, they won't look quite so intimidating when we put some steps up there and some handrails and things like that, so.
I'm sure to that little person it's going to look great, but boy, I'll tell you what, it's up there in the air.
[laughing]
Any other questions or comments at all? Okay, thanks, Dennis.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on then to public hearing. First public hearing noted here is to, a public hearing to comply with the provisions of state statute before the consummation, the purchase of property by the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, which property is located at 1008 McKinley Avenue, Norfolk, and described as Lot 73, Homestead Acres, in addition to Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska. That, I would open the public hearing and look for discussion from Mr. Miller, I'll bet, is the one that's going to share with us.
Yes, I will. This property is near Tahazooka Park. It's on the north side of McKinley Avenue, and it's right kind of between the west half of the park and the east half where the ball fields are. There are, there's a residence out there. We were approached by the owners of that property, who is Doris Merceny and Doris's children, in about November, to see if the city had any desire or wish to purchase that property. Doris was moving out into an assisted living facility or something and was going to be vacating that property, and they were contemplating putting it up for sale. And before they put that on the open market, they asked if the City of Norfolk had some interest in that. And so we got together as staff, we looked at the park division budget, and there was some money that we had allocated for paving up at Skavvy Park. We looked and see if there was some alternatives that we could use for, instead of concrete paving, what we could still accomplish at Skavvy Park, as well as use some of that money that had been allocated for that project to purchase this project. There was a couple of thoughts there. The Elkhorn Cabin, which many of you have been to, is back, would be immediately south of this property, is going to have to, was, the trail that will eventually go through Tahazooka Park from First to 13th Street, was going to have to be redirected around the current Elkhorn Cabin that was there. That current cabin then also was going to be in need of some renovation, and Pat Merceny felt that it would be time to maybe realign the trail, the proposed trail, to go through there to save a little money on the redirection of that trail, as well as save the money of remodeling that cabin, and use the home that is currently on the Doris Merceny property as the new Elkhorn Cabin. And so he had money in his budget that he could reallocate for the purchase of that, felt that we had a couple of needs there based upon the usage for the Elkhorn Cabin, saving some money on the trail project, and so we brought that to a subcommittee meeting in early December, kind of shared that vision with half the elected officials. They said they understood that and to go out and try to negotiate with the property owners to put together a deal. We've got a purchase agreement in your packet that we arrived at a purchase price of $181,500. There's about four acres out there, there's a large metal building, and then of course this home that will be converted to the cabin. We also have in your packet, the appraisal, which came in at $188,000, and so we brought those two together for you tonight to act on if you so desire. So we do have some Merceny children of Doris's here tonight, if you want to talk to them or ask them any questions, but they're in agreement with the purchase agreement. It fits our budget, we've got the money allocated, and it seems like it fits the park pretty well. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Gary, I don't have a question, but I think that the importance of this is evident. It's right in the middle of the park. This would connect us to the Romans property, connect us to the rest of Tahazooka, and it will fill a void with some of the buildings that we've needed. So I think it fits perfect, and I think it's going to save us money in the long run by not having to fix up some things and doing some things we were going to do. I know they're looking at that building out by the highway, thinking they can use some of those bigger sheds for their equipment, so I think it's going to work out great, and I think it's a very important piece to fill the middle of that park where we didn't have control of that.
That brings up a good point I didn't bring up earlier. We will be moving our maintenance staff that was originally at the entrance of the park in that, I think it's a green and white building, we'll be moving all of those folks to the more the middle of the park, located in this large metal building that's there. And that makes it a little bit more convenient for the park staff because now they're located halfway between the park instead of always coming to the west entrance of the park, if you will, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Gary?
Yeah, Gary, do you know the projected dollar amount it'll take to renovate that interior of that?
What we're going to do is, we don't have any money in this current year's budget to do the renovations. We looked at kind of what we want to replicate from an Elkhorn Cabin standpoint, and one of the things that we liked about the house is it has a very open plan concept. There's a large living room, kitchen, dining room, so there's not a lot of interior walls that have to be removed, those sorts of things. Pat Merceny's task for the coming next year's budget will be to look at how much renovation he wants to do in there, and then he'll put that in as a line item for that. We basically don't have time right now to get the renovations underway for the summer's use of the Elkhorn Cabin, to make that the Elkhorn Cabin. So that'll be a next year's planned budget item. So I don't have a good number for you right now because I don't think he has a concrete concept of what he will remodel. There won't be tons of it, and that's one of the things that he liked about it, was that it's, from a big open room concept, which is the way the Elkhorn Cabin is currently, that's a long ways there right now. Thank you.
Gary, do we have any kind of a plan in place? Are we planning on demolishing the Elkhorn Cabin? Are we going to maintain it as long as we can?
No. I would believe that the Elkhorn Cabin, the current Elkhorn Cabin will go away. It's, depending on how the trail route goes through there, I believe it will be in the way or close to being in the way, and so I would anticipate that it will be demolished.
Okay. Any other questions at all, council, or comments? Hearing none then? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak to this, in favor of, or in opposition to, or that may have any questions at all. If not, then I will close this public hearing, and I would ask for consideration of approval of an amendment to purchase the property at 1008 McKinley Avenue, adjacent to Tahazooka Park from Doris M. Merceny, trustee of the Merceny Family Revocable Trust, for $181,500.
I'll make the motion to consider the purchase, Your Honor.
We have a motion with a second for consideration. Any further discussion at all? If not, I would ask that you please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. The motion to approve the agreement is approved. Okay. And next on our agenda is consideration of ordinance number 5202, vacating the North-South Alley immediately east and adjacent to Lot 9, Block 4, Pazwalk 6th, addition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and the North-South Alley immediately east of and adjacent to Lot 16, less the south 10 feet of Block 11, Pazwalk 6th, addition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County. We're looking at who's going to speak on this? Do I have a motion yet first, please? I'm sorry.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance number 50.
A motion with a second.
Mayor and council, this is the alley just adjacent to Veterans Memorial Parkway on the west side. I had the opportunity to talk to the vast majority of the property owners along there and had great response. They're very inquisitive and genuinely interested in what we're planning on doing, explain the hammerhead concept of closing those alleyways on either side of Luff Avenue as in the main interest of the park, so it'll be more of a private alleyway for them, really in a sense, so we don't have any, we don't create any raceway effect in that alley as we stand Veterans Memorial Park up all the way. Had great response. I didn't get to, every single one of them, I think I missed two. One was a vacant building and the other gentleman I couldn't get a hold of. But I will tell you, I was down there after church one night, actually, and walking the streets on a Saturday night in my suit and tie, and I must have gathered a lot of attention because they were coming out to greet me, so we had a lot of good conversation, and they, to a member, they embraced it fully, so. Dennis and I would be happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions about design or any questions in general, we'd be happy to answer the questions that you might have about that.
Shane, I just had a question. And we're basically just closing the south end of the north alley and the north end of the south alley, but when we say vacate, we're still going to maintain the alley that's remaining, correct?
Correct.
The vacation ordinance is just those two ends.
Okay. Any other?
Dennis, a question for you then, on the vacation. Normally when you do a vacating an alley, correct me if I'm wrong too, and I very well could be, but I thought the property, the piece that you vacated, split between the property owners on either side, or are we going to retain full ownership of the piece of property?
State statute in that particular regard has changed several times over the years, and right now you have the option of reverting it back to the property owners as you described, or the city can retain the entire property and do with it as it pleases. So this ordinance is drafted such that we retain the property to the City of Norfolk, and we also have to maintain the easements in there so that the utility companies can continue to have their facilities there, so. And we would have gotten it, we owned the property on both sides of the alley in this particular area anyhow, so we would have gotten it regardless of how the statute was at this point in time.
That's the way I thought it was reading, but I wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other questions or discussion, council? Anyway? Okay, with that, we have a short title left. An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to vacate the North-South Alley immediately east of and adjacent to Lot 9, Block 4, Pazwalk 6th, addition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and the North-South Alley immediately east of and adjacent to Lot 16, less the south 10 feet, Block 11, Pazwalk 6th, addition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, both located in the southwest quarter of Section 26, Township 24 North, Range 1, west of the 6th PM, City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. And with that, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5202 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion to suspend and pass on second and third. Any further discussion at all? If not, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5202 carries on second and third readings. Okay. That pretty much takes care of all the action items for this council tonight. It is a public comment period, and I'm going to guess that there's a few of you with us tonight that might have something you'd like to share. So we will ask that you come forward, state your name for us, please, and certainly you're free to speak. I'm going to assume maybe we're all speaking about one and the same issue, and certainly that's great. We're glad to hear, glad to see you out here tonight. I hope that kind of interest in what goes on in our community continues. But with that being said, let's start, and what kind of, I would ask you to be considerate, and rather than asking for, one by one you all come up, maybe there, if someone has spoke for, and you would just like to echo their words, that would be fine too, rather than letting each one of you speak. But let's just see how it goes. If there's some leader that wants to take first step, that's a big book there, sir.
I'm not going to put it in my hip pocket either. My name is Richard Zimmerman. I live here in town on Bel Air Road. And I guess this makes up for a lot of the meetings when you don't have anybody here at all, so maybe this will carry over and you'll have more people more frequently.
That'd be great.
I'm here tonight because I've been asked by Norfolk Area Right to Life and Lutherans for Life to present signatures from petitions that have been circulating during the last, I don't know, six to eight months or something like that, on people who are concerned about Planned Parenthood's intention to come to Norfolk. The petition reads, "Planned Parenthood of the Heartland wants to expand across Nebraska. Norfolk is one of six new cities where PPH wants to open a new site. In Omaha and Lincoln, PPH has been doing surgical and chemical abortions. We are citizens of the Norfolk area who oppose Planned Parenthood coming into our community. Your signature on this petition will be used to inform our elected officials in this area that we oppose PPH from coming into Norfolk." The sum total has come to $5,050. Over half of those come from Norfolk. The remainder have come from areas from Columbus to Wayne, from Tilden to West Point, and cities in that area. So here's a print copy. I'm not going to print out one for everybody, but if the council members and the mayor would like, I do have a digital form if you would be interested. And I don't know, is it appropriate to pass that now, or?
That'd be fine. You sure can.
Okay. Do, does everybody want one? Does anybody want one?
Yeah, we can share one.
Yeah, we can make sure.
Just share one? Okay. It's a rather large file, so I wouldn't try emailing it unless you can zip it.
You know how to do that, don't you?
A point for clarification, I believe that you have, as a council, you've also asked as a protocol that any comments be limited to no more than five minutes. Just for everybody else, in case you didn't remember that, that would be, I believe five minutes is the limit you'd like.
That'd be great.
I understand that in presenting these petitions, we're not asking the city council to make a vote tonight. I hope everyone here understands that. It's not going to be anything that can really be done here in the city. We recognize that you're a local city council. This is an issue that really needs to be addressed at a state and a federal level, and so we understand there's other people that are necessary to be involved in this But I do think it is appropriate to ask if you would consider at some point some policy that would limit or eliminate cooperation and collaboration between the city and Planned In all of these petitions, you will have all sorts of people with all sorts of reasons to keep them out or to want them to not come here. I can't speak for all of those reasons, and, but I can say, I suspect the major reason is the fact that they do abortions. That's what we had on the petition. From Planned Parenthood's own website, from 2010, they said that they performed 329,445 abortions throughout their network inside the U.S. Regardless of, you may, you will hear statistics going back and forth, regardless of what percentage of their business that represents, it's still 329,000-plus abortions. And I would suspect that is a significant reason why many people would not want any part of their network here in our city. You may hear that Planned Parenthood provides a much-needed service. Well, last time I looked, I have talked with several local doctors. We have an excellent hospital here. We have a large variety of clinics. We even have a low-income community clinic. And I would say on that basis, we probably don't have a need for them to come in to provide some service that really isn't available anywhere else. My hope and my prayer in this discussion is that it does not degenerate into name-calling on either side of the fence, that it's an issue where we can talk about the problem with calm and reason and look at the truth and not look at name-calling or anything like that. I'm not here to make your job more difficult tonight. By nature of being on the council, that's, every now and then you will face tough issues, and this is one that most people really don't want to dig into the facts. I want to applaud the work that you do as a council because you're doing things like the water park, you're trying to renovate the city, you're trying to make it more of an attraction, not only for Norfolk but for the area, I think people are noticing that, and for the state in general. You've done a lot of good for our city, and I pray that you would continue to be able to do that well. With presenting these petitions, it's primarily the idea that a lot of the citizens see that this is not going to be good for our community, and that's what I'm here to tell you tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman, you've done it very respectfully, and I do appreciate that. I think this council will agree that we appreciate your notice of the efforts of your elected officials, but that doesn't happen without the support of this community as well. So again, thank you for your words. Anyone else that wants to come forward tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for just the opportunity to visit with you. These are tough times, and they're definitely tough, volatile issues that from time to time are called to deal with, and I think it's a great opportunity for us as a community to visit with you and to know what you're thinking and to hear from your constituents and also see what we're thinking. Some time ago, we all became aware of the fact that Planned Parenthood has targeted several cities and towns in our state, Norfolk being one of them, and on the surface, it really doesn't seem like a big deal. But when you begin to investigate how Planned Parenthood originated, who they are, what they stand for, and what they do, their infiltration, the possible infiltration into our community is sort of shocking and really alerted my senses that now's the time that we need to educate ourselves and stand up and see what's going on and see what we can possibly do to prevent that from happening, not only in Norfolk, but statewide and other places. Oftentimes, Planned Parenthood, as they're doing now, will sort of subtly enter into a community by suggesting that they're simply a medical clinic offering services for families and children, men and women, and they do serve families and they do offer medical services, as Richard suggested, STD testing, pregnancy testing, and other such testing. But I think it's important to make clear that we make no mistake of understanding who they are. And the facts are, who are they? They're the world's leading abortion provider. They're the leading abortion provider in the United States, with earning more than $100 million every year on abortions in the United States alone. It's a business. It's what they do, and unfortunately, they are very good at it. And knowing that they are a leading abortion provider sort of spurs me on to visit with you tonight. But not only that, a 2010 report by the International Planned Parenthood Federation is advocating a value-free sex education in our public schools, whether is advocating a value-free sex education in our public schools, where there's no values taught with sex education, where sex is basically taught as a free-for-all with no consequences. And we're seeing some of the drastic consequences of that type of education all over Norfolk, and all over our state, with teen pregnancies, and the breakup of the family, and where moms and dads are advocating their responsibility, and where organizations and the government are sort of undermining parental control and consent of their children. And I think as a church leader, and I'm representing Northern Heights Baptist Church as their senior pastor, I think-
State your name for us, too.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Matt Gilmore, I'm senior pastor of Northern Heights Baptist Church.
Thank you.
And I think because of these issues, I think we need to begin to work together, and not give up and say, "Well, we really can't do anything, there's really no legal recourse that we can take." We'll sort of brainstorm together, and see if we can't work together, and come up with a plan. As a community, known as a place to raise families, Norfolk doesn't need this, and as a church family, we don't want this in our community. Families today need strengthened, not undermined and torn apart. And I understand that abortion is a volatile issue, and a lot of times it divides us, but as a church family, we believe that life, by its very definition, begins at conception. An embryo, no matter how fragile or underdeveloped it may be, is still a human being, and it has characteristics and it exists, thereby affording it the protection originally intended by our founding fathers in the Declaration of Independence. The Declaration of Independence declares that human beings are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, and that among these are life. And also, from a biblical perspective, the Bible shows us that children are not a curse from the Lord, no matter how rowdy our kids may be, but children are a gift from God, and they're given to us by God in order to protect and to train, and God purposes life from the very beginning of his or her time in the womb, thereby affording it extra protection as one of God's amazing creatures and miracles. God is the giver of life. Who are we to take it? And I think now's the time that we, as a community, work together across the aisle, and I, for one, am starting to educate myself on what's going on, and now I think it's time that we stand on our convictions and see what we can do, and not be disgusted with ourselves on what we cannot do. But I appreciate your time, Mayor, council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm the associate pastor at Christ Lutheran Church. Your Honor and members of the council, it's a privilege to be here and to be a part of this community, to be a person, and it means that you're a part of a community. And as the previous speaker has mentioned, you are entrusted with protecting the community. Just previously, you talked about fair housing and non-discrimination, and that's certainly very worthy and commendable. One of the greatest forms of discrimination these days is the discrimination against persons who are not yet born. They are part of the community, as our Declaration of Independence and Constitution verify, and the previous speaker also mentioned those. This coming Sunday, many churches will be celebration, celebrating Life Day, not a birthday, that's December 25th, but exactly nine months from the day, March 25th, is the day of the conception of Jesus. And for many of us, that's a sacred name. It's a name that's given above all names. But because that name is given above all names, the name and personhood of each child is sacred, and a community is known by how it protects the weakest. The power that is given is to protect human life and personhood. And I know some who are nonbelievers who also affirm that, because they value human community, and want to keep it human community, and that's the central issue here. I'm not here to preach, come on Sunday, I'll do that for you. But I am here to call us back to the most fundamental reality of being a human being, and that, I believe, is under God's law. The sacredness of human life is God's law. We have no choice about this matter, and Planned Parenthood is selling lies, lies that are very destructive of personhood and human community. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
My name is Jeannie Sellers, and I'm not a pastor, but I'm a pastor's wife, but I'm also a mother. And as a mother, I guess I would like to speak out against Planned Parenthood coming into our community. I don't know if there's anybody that can protect these babies, these unborn babies, except us, and that is the idea of speaking out and keeping them from coming in. To me, abortion is one of the worst things in the world, and I happen to know someone who the parent had thought of aborting, and she is a viable, beautiful person, and I guess when you come in contact with someone like this, you realize how terrible abortion is, and I think we all need to really think about that in this community, and like so many here said, to stand up for what we believe in, and to stop it before it even starts. And I know I would be very proud of Norfolk, as I always have been, if we can do this. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight that wants to speak? The messages have been strong, and certainly, again, I am thankful that you came out and voiced your concerns and shared with us. I guess my request of you would be to do exactly what you're doing, working with your local churches. It seems to me that's a great place to start, and you got a strong message there. So, again, as was told, there's no action that can be taken by this council. So, I appreciate all you coming out tonight, I really do, and we'll go forward. Thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes, a second.
And please vote. How'd they do, Beth?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Thanks, everyone.
Very well done.
Did you understand that answer this morning to your-
Yeah, it did, and did you under-